All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to City Council for Tuesday, May 17th. Randy Sanders will be on his way. We had a very busy evening this evening. We celebrated our Service to Youth Champion at Stockard Youth Center earlier, and that is Ambie's sister, Christina Romine. So she received an award this evening. We did that at 5:00. And then we've had practice for coronation with the Strawberry Festival tomorrow evening. We have that at 6:00 at the chapel. And I want to make sure everybody who is in attendance at council and everybody who is watching council, you are invited to coronation tomorrow night at Wesley Chapel at 6:00. So it will be a nice evening. That's where we crown our king and queen of the Strawberry Festival. And now we're here. And so Randy is serving as master of ceremonies for that. So he's still helping the children walk through and make sure that everybody knows their places. So as we call them into order and we enter into our moment of silent reflection, this time of year, I would ask that we have some positive thoughts for good weather and good fortune for our favorite time of year. We're so thrilled to have a full festival this year. All of the events are back. The carnival is setting up across Madison Street. It looks really good. And the vendors are now open in the semicircle at Jawbone Park. So thank you to Jerry Arnold for working with the carnival and the vendors, as well as CJ Rylands, and getting all of this set up for our Strawberry Festival. So let's think about good weather and good fortune as we finish the week strong with a very good time, a very good time here in our community. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We would like to first recognize Dennis Cornus. He has the Upstate County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's meeting review. So Dennis, if you'd please head to the podium.
Nice to meet you this evening.
Dennis, that was a great report.
I love it. All right, this is a report for the Upstate County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for 19 April of 2022. The meeting was called to order at 5:35 PM and the march minutes were approved. Under Upstate County Trail Free Update, on 02/02/2022, a new bridge was installed on a new trail segment. The Trail Cleanup Day, which was part of the West Virginia DEP Make a Shine Day, was very successful with nine volunteers. It took place on 09/02/2022. The Ferry Garden decorated will be rescheduled probably in June. Director McCourt reported that someone was interested in possibly hosting a 24-hour trail run race on the trails. Rachel Weber recommended starting with a shorter race. She also added that she wants to run this by the Trails Group before their approval first. Under budget approvals, at the last county commission's budget hearing, the funding for the new park sign, the steel cabinet for tools and keypad for the table, and items for the pool concession stand, as well as pool bathroom partitions, were approved. Under Director's report, the gate in front of the Pavilion Restrooms will be removed soon. Director McCourt reported that he is applying for funding and submitting an application to build, quote, "a low-rope obstacle course with seven obstacles" in the area of the amphitheater. And that's the first time we've heard news about the amphitheater in some time. To continue. The pool is being painted and new dining boards have arrived. The pool opening will probably be 28/05/2022 for the public and 22/05 for parties. Eric Jett is planning to partner with Upstate County Parks and Recreation to hold a sprint marathon triathlon in August. Director McCourt stated that he wants to turn this into a wellness weekend with St. Joseph's Hospital present to do health screenings. Other events could be taking place then also. Under Disc Golf Update, the Disc Golf Tournament is tentatively scheduled for 28/05/22 and will be open to 36 players with a $25 entry fee. Various tees are open for sponsorship at $100 a tee. Brief explanation, there'll be a sign there at that tee with the sponsors' information. To continue. J.J. Ford is making the directional signs for the Disc Golf Course. Under meeting time and date, the Upstate County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will now meet on the third Tuesday of each month at 5:30 PM. Under public comment, gravel and a kiosk were added to the boat ramp on Yocum Road. The meeting was adjourned at 6:35 PM, as respectfully submitted by Dennis P. Corns.
Dennis, where's the boat ramp on Yocum Road? I guess, where's Yocum Road at?
I have no idea. I was hoping you would tell me. But that wasn't...
Isn't that on the Middle Fork River?
I don't know.
It might be, yeah. I'll see how it could be up the canyon.
I think Yocum Road is on the Middle Fork River. I think that's out by the Barbara Randolph County line area.
Apparently it's still in the county, though.
It is. I think you get off the Boy Scout Camp Road and go down in there.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that's where it is.
Thank you, Dennis.
Where's the neighborhood of that boat ramp up by...
Weyerhauser?
No.
Trust, Joy, whatever.
Probably not, no.
Past the high school, that's Hampton.
That's Hampton Boat Ramp, okay. I see. All right. That's into my report.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next guest, we have Ann Wilson. And council, everybody, I believe, except for CJ, has met, and he may have met her along passing. But we want to introduce to you our new director over at the theater. Ann is a West Virginia Wesleyan College graduate and was one of our three interviewees that we got, well, we met two of the three interviewees who were vying to be the director of the theater. So we were happy to extend the offer to her. She will be starting with us on June 1st. And so we wanted to ask her to come to council to just say hello and so we can introduce her to the community. So Ann, if you want to take to the podium, you don't really have to feel like you have to give a big speech. We just wanted to say hello.
Hi. As he said, I graduated from West Virginia Wesleyan. I'm from Elkins. I graduated from Elkins High School. And this is a really exciting opportunity for me, and I'm very, very eager to get started as a manager. So there's a lot of good things coming. Going to try and maybe have an intern or something this summer with me to get the ball rolling on some projects. And I have a lot of ideas for a lot of fundraising and events and stuff, so I'm very excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Wish you very well.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. If you'd like to, you're more than welcome to. But it's a pretty evening, so if you want to go out and play, you can.
Go ahead.
I'll see you all very soon. Don't worry.
Me too.
Yeah, if you want to.
Sure.
Thank you again, ma'am.
You give Ann a 10-minute head start.
Most importantly, though, I think if Katie Kubo wants to go out and play, that's okay too.
Yes, you should do that before I say something.
All right. Let's try to maintain some order. I know we're all excited to have what hopes to be a shorter meeting. Nod, nod, David. So let's go down to our department and board reports. We'll start with Jerry Arnold. Hello.
Hello. Good evening. Want to talk to help Jerry?
Chime in. We'll do this.
Well, David.
Hey, Ren.
Very, very brief report. Actually, just myself and the street department as a mayor said, we've been working since the last time we were here mainly on Strawberry Festival preparations and the events. I will say, the only side note that I have is there have been a lot of complaints about potholes called in. I think I told you at last meeting, we are waiting on some parts for a roller. And just to remind folks, if I don't have those parts by next week, I'll start looking at possibly renting something to finish up our patching. Like I said, we got about, I will say, 35% completed, and our roller broke down. So again, we've been waiting about three weeks now on parts and stuff. So that's where we're at with that. Just want to let the public know that we haven't forgotten about the holes. And we have some areas along or around the carnival area where we know we're going to be high-traffic areas for the weekend. We did go ahead and put in some cold patch just to make it safe, so we can maybe stave off any twisted ankles or anything. So that has been taken care of. And that's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions.
Is Hollins and Bogus on the list for the potholes?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. There's been a couple complaints from Hollins.
You always use your whacker, huh? It's quite compacted as well.
Yep, yep. Yeah, it's not nearly as efficient. But yeah, like I said, if we don't have something by next week, I'll start looking at it.
I think Pam's volunteering her shovel, so...
Yeah, I'll do whatever. Direct traffic.
Very good.
Any other questions for Jerry?
Nice, Jerry.
Thank you. Up next, our finance director, Anne B. Jenkins.
Well, this should be a quick report today. We're going to give you the balances in your enterprise funds for April 30. Waste Collection Board money market checking, $1,090,000. CD of $58,000. Water Board, $536,000 with working capital savings of $871,000. Sanitary Board money market checking, $773,000. Working capital, $457,000. The stormwater fund at $221,000. We've been working on the budgets as well for the enterprise funds. They set on a different schedule of being complete other than what the general fund is set up to be. So Waste Collection Board passed their budget at $3,456,000. And just highlights of the budget. It includes a payment for a new garbage truck. We're still waiting on the delivery of that. It'll be almost a year soon. Then a fifth-wheel record trailer and a CNC machine to use to help with parts. The Water Board passed their budget at $2,688,000. It includes software for the backflow. Cost to start gathering lead and copper information from customers. Water line work at Deer Creek and water tank inspections, as well as a raw water turbidity meter. Sanitaries will be presented this Thursday, finalize it, but it's going to be $2,600,000. And we know at least $500,000 are going to go towards capital improvements and equipment. I'm trying to still work out some details with that supervisor. He was on vacation last week. And in your bills to be approved, you had $10,000 to the West Virginia Strawberry Festival, its contribution, $7,200 to Seal Coat Concepts for curbing and lot re-painting, $1,500 Valley Steel for the street signs, $11,000 Dave Davis Heating for the HVAC in the basement of the CAC, $6,400 George Wilson Doors and Hardware for the CAC, $1,900 Sherwin-Williams Elkins for primer and paint, and $30,000 to Michael Ash for FEMA Grant Number 2 Burke Street Lit Station and the Pittsburgh Lit Station generator set. $36,000 Tri-County Electric, and that again is for the FEMA grant for the generators. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Ann B. relative to the financial report? Thank you. City Police Chief Matt Gregory.
I got the memo too.
No hour-long sermon for the city?
Not tonight. All right. Just a few updates for council. Obviously, it's a very busy week for the police department. We continued to coordinate a number of activities for the Strawberry Festival. Concerning the ordinance, irrelevant to parking along the parade route, we began to enforce that at our most recent parade this past Saturday with the Horse and Carriage Parade. Did have plenty of signage along the parade route. Despite our best efforts of closing traffic down quite a thoroughly than what we normally do and having a cruiser go up and down Main Street on the loudspeaker, we still had to tow two cars. Would like to work with Randy over the next couple of days, maybe push out some more messages in advance of this weekend's parades as well, because we continue to monitor that. Tomorrow is the Web Grub Blue Wall Day at the police department. This year, we're going to honor David Kaufman as our 2022 honoree. The ceremony will be at 2:00 PM tomorrow at the Public Safety Complex. So would like to see everybody come out to that. My understanding is it'll be a little bit of a blast from the past. I know a number of officers that Mr. Kaufman worked with back in the 80s are planning on coming here. So I'll be interested to catch up with everybody. Continue with the background process for our new police candidates, the final phase. Everybody has moved through every phase except the psychological about. We originally had planned on working with the United Summit Center to conduct this as we have in the past. Unfortunately, just the turnaround time for that was very extended. One of our candidates was supposed to have an evaluation on Monday, and it got postponed to earlier than June 10. We weren't able to get the other two in until the 13th and 14th respectively. As I mentioned previously, there are only two basic academy classes remaining this year. They're both going to be held in August. And the deadline for application is in the middle of June. So with that, we were very much up against the law in getting anybody trained this year. So we began to reach out to other departments and investigate other possibilities. We did identify another agency known as Climen and Associates based out of Charleston. The Elkins Police Department utilizes this to great effect. And we were actually able to get all three evaluations scheduled for next Tuesday. So a much better timeline than what we were facing. And actually, it's just a little cheaper than what we were at with the Summit Center. So hopefully, we'll get good results on that and anticipate moving forward with the onboarding process as we enter into June. And the plan is to hand-deliver. Again, because we're so much up against the 11th hour of the deadline, we're going to hand-deliver the applications to the academy, just to make sure that they get there in a timely manner. As we finish up the Strawberry Festival this week and enter into next week, we do have a number of meetings that will occur, beginning with the After Action Review of the Strawberry Festival, which occurs at the conclusion of the event each year. This allows us to better plan and prepare for next year's event moving forward. We'll also begin initial planning meetings for a tabletop exercise to comply with clear time-sensitive standards in August. Our target date for this exercise is sometime in August. It will focus on testing our ICS and NIMs capabilities for our All-Hazard Plan. We, as we investigate which topic to address this year, we actually had a meeting in the last week or two with St. Joseph's Hospital where we were in an attempt to get on the same page and discuss mental health issues and our respective agencies' response to those. The idea came about that we should collaborate on this, knowing that we have this tabletop coming forward in August, that we should each collaborate and work together on an exercise that would benefit both agencies. So representatives from the hospital have been invited to our initial planning meetings next week, and that is our intention, to work together moving forward into August. Also, next week, we will be meeting with our initial specific meetings as we begin to really put the specific plans together for Longspreek. That will begin next week as well, and we anticipate many planning meetings beyond that as we begin to put the particulars and all that together as well. Also, next week, we will be assisting Buchanan Academy Elementary School with their chair races. We are the reigning champions, so it's my intention to keep that, keep that home there. And then finally, the police department just recently updated its policy procedure manual relative to changes with clear standards and practices. And we're in the process of updating Power DMS. Again, our first web assessment will be this summer, and so all this is in preparation for that as well. And Mayor, that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Any questions for Chief Gregory?
Hey, Matt, on your accident report, I see three on North Locust. Is there something that we could do to mitigate that, or is it just random?
That seems to be random. I think what would, in terms of monitoring that, is to look at, to see if there's more of a trend over the course of several months. I know that just historically, that area can be hit and miss. I know we used to have a lot of issues, really haven't, or not would, haven't as a late with the turning hay, especially there in front of the bank. We used to have several accidents in that regard. But we've seen, especially last month, it's not at any particular point, it's at different points. So what I think that we need to do is just continue to monitor that, and if it becomes a trend, then develop a strategy at that point.
Great. Thank you.
The mayor of Elkins reached out to me, and they want to bring their tactical vehicle open over to the Strawberry Festival. I suggested that they go into the Friday Night Fireworks Parade. I don't know, do you want to coordinate where that goes, or...
Yeah. Yeah. I know historically, when police units have participated in the Strawberry Festival, they've always done it in conjunction with the Fireworks Parade on Friday night. Generally, what we've done in the past is about any police unit that wants to participate, go on with the escort, and then follow it up with the Friday night.
Okay. Yeah. I told them it was more than, we were more than happy to host it. We just want to make sure it fit the right place.
Yep.
So Matt, I don't know if you had anything to do with the parking map, but we have the permit parking in the 18 slots right behind the theater.
Uh-huh.
That's all that missed out with the two-hour parking in there.
That's an old map.
It's just an old, okay. Thank you.
Oh, speaking of Jerry and Matt, I did tell Strawberry Festival that while they're, and Jerry and I already talked about this, just to make sure that we get maybe a couple cones up down in this Spring Street parking lot, some of the workers at Jake's Building, where the gift shop is, that they just want to make sure that they've got some parking spaces available to work, that's to work during the festival week. So that shouldn't be a problem. We just want to make sure we get some cones up to give them some spaces that are guaranteed that they can park in.
Speaking of cones, there is a cone with a truck parked outside of the Kinnon Theater. Been there all day. We're digging up something down there.
It's like the gas line.
I think, I see a truck parked there every once in a while. I think somebody's working in there. They just pull the truck up and put a cone out. That could be too. I know I've seen the other day, as a matter of fact, I think Tim called. One day I was coming in and I was talking to you. I seen a truck parked, actually, I believe it was a Jeep parked with a block in the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And the truck was parked.
It's a third dis...
And you called, I think you called down and talked to Tim about that, and they sent an officer over. So I think there's an issue there with parking on the sidewalk. I'll check and see what type of truck it is. Again, I know there was, back when they were doing the renovations inside and the actual work to the sidewalk, the contractor came and we asked him not to park on the sidewalk there. He can pull off and unload, but then pull over to the parking lot and park at the time. And that contractor was related to the folks there.
Well, that was like it early this morning, and then when I came through just a little bit ago, it was like it's still yet to see me. Of course, it was stopping traffic when people had to take turns coming up the highway.
All right. Anything else for Chief? Nope? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Tom, do you have a specific report, or do you want to wait till we get down to F1 and 2?
I'll wait.
Okay. All right. Council, under correspondence and information, you've got the notice of proposed adoption of the amendment to municipal zoning ordinance public hearing June 2. This is adding the condominium piece to R2, and we'll talk more about that down under F2. We've got the Charles Gibson Libraries Director Report for May. We did a proclamation for Nurses Week and National Hospital Week, May 6 through 14. Letter from the Upstate County Commission, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, allocation $60,000 for construction of the live-fire training facility. We appreciate that. We mentioned that at the last council meeting. We've got the Contract and Agreement for Gamble Amusements Upon the City Parking Lots in May 18 through 22. Canvas of Votes and Certification of the Votes from the Election of May 10, 2022. And then we've got the, as Matt mentioned earlier, we've got the Fifth Annual Web Grub Police Officer Recognition Day, May 18. That's tomorrow, 2:00 PM at the Public Safety Complex. We had the 15th Annual Service to Youth Champion Award today at, actually, it was at 5:00. And then on Friday, we've got the 15th Annual Friendly Way Day, firefighter recognition, and that will be at 3:00 PM also at the Public Safety Complex. We have, under the Consent Agenda, the Approval of the Minutes, and we have 317 of 22 and 47 of 22. We don't have 55 or 59 yet. We have the Approval of the Building and Wiring Permits. We've got the Approval of the Payment of Bills. And then we had, of course, as we mentioned at a council meeting back in April, Mr. Bill O'Brien passed away. He was a member of the Charles W. Gibson Library Board. The city doesn't really have, we don't have governance over the Charles Gibson Library. They have a board of their own. The city basically acts as a pass-through of the levies that are voted on by city residents. But the city does appoint board members. So I spoke to Brett Miller. Brett works for Ryan Strategies and is formerly the Colleges Librarian at Wesleyan. And so I think he will add a nice perspective and expertise to the Charles Gibson Library Board. I would ask that you approve him to fill the term of Bill O'Brien, which would end on June 30 of '24. So I'm asking that you approve the Consent Agenda as presented. A motion by Jack, a second by CJ. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like a sign opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We are down to strategic issues for discussion and or vote. We have Tom McNeil for both of these. F1 is the Approval of Ordinance 456. This is the establishment of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the City of Buchanan. This is a second and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read the ordinance by title. Ordinance number 456 of the City of Buchanan. Ordinance number 456 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance establishing the Buchanan Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, setting the number and qualifications of board members, enumerating its responsibilities and setting its authority, including its authority to advise on management of the Stockard Youth Community Center, and establishing that board members serve at will and not for term. This is the second of two readings. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I have a question. I had to ask last time. This board will not dissolve the current board you have for Stockard Youth Center, will it?
That's correct. It doesn't, but I am, but I am planning to. I'm not, because that, there makes, it makes no sense to have a Stockard Board and a Parks and Recreation Board. That's a recreational facility.
But that they have to have their own board?
No, no, no. They can, the Stockard Youth Director can report to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay. I mentioned something to Deborah about it, and she said that she thinks it's in the, the.
General call you over.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll look into that. This ordinance doesn't affect that.
I don't think that's the case, but maybe it, we'll, I'll review that and we'll recur to report in the next meeting if you like.
But this doesn't, I mean, this, what we're doing doesn't replace it. But I mean, there's nothing in the language that doesn't. But if we can, I'd like to, because I just, I don't, I don't know, it seems redundant to have that have its own board and then all of our other recreational facilities have a board.
Now, are you going to offer people on that board?
Well, sir, I mean, we can, we can gauge interest, yeah. This calls for seven members. Any other questions?
I move we approve the Parks and Rec Board, second reading.
Motion by CJ, second by David. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance 457, this is amending the zoning ordinance 244, section 502A, including the placement of certain condominiums or unit property within the R2 general residential district, this is District A. This is second reading.
The second of three readings. You've read the title, so I won't go to repeat that. But I'd be happy to take any questions. This, the map that's displayed here depicts the boundaries of the central residential historic district. If you recall in first reading of the ordinance, you amended the ordinance to preclude the placement of condominiums within this green line. The purple section depicts the portion of the central residential district that is within the R2 zone. The, the rest of the district is made up of primarily, the bulk of this is zoned C1. This little corner down here at Dr. Durand's is C2, and the section east of Factory Street and north of East Main Street is Zone C3. The condominiums will also be prohibited within those portions of those other zones as well because of the way that the, the ordinance was amended at the last meeting. So the, so condominiums will be permitted within the R2 zone. Now, it's also important to note that what is permissible in the R2 zone is also permissible in R3, in all of the other, like higher-numbered residential zones, as well as the commercial zones. But again, even in the commercial, the C1, 2, and 3, that's part of the central residential historic district, they will be prohibited from locating within that area. So, so anywhere within the green line, the ordinance will prohibit condominiums within that area, but it will be permissible in essentially, really, anywhere else in the city that's not zoned R1. That's probably the simplest way to describe it.
Which our only swath of R1 is basically City Park, West Lincoln, up through there. Yep. Are there any questions or comments relative to the revision that was requested last meeting? Hearing none, I would call for, I would entertain a motion that we approve.
Second.
Okay. Ordinance 457, we have a motion by Randy, a second by Sheila. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Council comments and announcements. Pam?
I want to clarify something. I think, I want to make sure it is an ordinance for the ones a lot carry snakes around during the break, right?
Well, we did, it works.
Certain length of snake. I think the ordinance specifies the length of the snake.
That's right.
Okay. I think somebody else did that again last year. I just want people to have a good time. I think people's just thrilled to get out and have something to do again and be careful about the little kids running all over.
Thank you. CJ?
I'm good.
Jack?
I'm good.
David?
I'm good.
Sheila?
Have a very festival, a very good time, and I'm so glad to see it's all back up and running also, and these kids, I'm happy for them because some kind of normal seats back, and I can appreciate that. And I just appreciate this town. Just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready?
My apologies for getting here a little bit late. I was at the rehearsal for the upcoming coronation of the West Virginia Strawberry Festival King and Queen-elect. I haven't emceed that event for many, many years, but I, it is one of the most beautiful, elegant, wonderful parts of the festival, so I would invite anyone and everyone to attend at Wesley Chapel tomorrow at 6:30 PM. One of the great honors that we have over the years has been hosting many, many delegates and many great representatives and honorable people to come and crown the king and queen. And again, this year, the person crowning the king is the West Virginia Commissioner of Agriculture, Kent Lionheart. And the person crowning the queen is the First Lady of West Virginia, Kathy Justice, who will be with us tomorrow afternoon and tomorrow evening. So please, come join us at the West Virginia Wesleyan Chapel, the beautiful part of the campus, I think. And you'll see wonderful children participating, you'll see wonderful adults participating. The mayor will be there to present the keys to the city and the official welcome, so please come join us. It's a wonderful way to really celebrate the West Virginia Strawberry Festival and all that it does for our community and our state. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Tomorrow at noon, we have the opening ceremonies at the Courthouse steps, so if you're interested, please be part of that. That will be when the festival officially opens. As we mentioned, tomorrow at 2:00, we'll be down at the Public Safety Complex to celebrate law enforcement and honor our, our former sheriff, David Kaufman. And then tomorrow evening, as Mr. Sanders said, we'll have our coronation. Thursday night, we've got our Junior Roll Two Parade. Friday night, we've got the Fireman's Parade, and Saturday, we have the Grand Feature Parade. So lots going on. It is still considered to be one of the very largest festivals in the state. It is one of the oldest festivals in the state, and we're very proud to have it and to be known for it, you know? It's, you mentioned Buchanan anywhere, and some, and people say, oh, strawberries, they say, they say three things. They say the donut shop, CJ Maggie's, and the strawberry festival. So we're proud to have all three. So with that, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, everybody enjoy the festival, be safe. See you.
Have a great time, everybody.